Good evening, everyone. Um, we'll start this meeting, get it going. Um, I'll call the meeting to order. Can we get, uh, can I get a motion that the agenda for the January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one Committee of the Whole Meeting be adopted as presented? Counselor Byer will make that motion. Any comments or concerns? additions? All right, all those in favor? Perfect, thank you. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the January twelfth, twenty twenty-one Committee of the Whole Meeting be adopted as presented? Marissa Harrell make that motion. Um, any changes, concerns? All right, hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. And moving on to delegations, tonight, we are fortunate and have Nancy Robbins with us from Community Futures, West Yellowhead. Nancy, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. It's so nice to be here and see everybody, even though you're in a little box on my screen. It's nice to see everybody well. I'm here tonight to talk about the business visitation, uh, that we did in September and October. And like anything in a global pandemic, the information's already outdated. But I thought I would come and talk to you about it anyway, and just to give you a snapshot of what we're doing at Community Futures and what we're hearing from the business community right now in our second lockdown. So as most of you are aware, because most of you participated, uh, we identified ninety-nine businesses in Edson that had storefront properties that we decided we were going to visit. And we managed to visit, uh, fifty-eight of them. One of the lessons we learned is that we had a very ambitious day planned. And, uh, we're hoping in the future when we do business walks that we're going to target by sector so that we're able to focus more and get more businesses, uh, visited. One of the things that we did find out in our business walk, uh, we asked questions about, uh, how is your business adapted under COVID-nineteen measures? How do you feel your business needs to move forward? And what types of support does your business need to succeed in the next six months? So we took a lot of that information that we, uh, gathered from our business walks in the region, and we moved forward to do some planning, um, for the upcoming year and to start looking at recovery, um, because we've already been, uh, most of the time we're dealing with relief and relief coaching and funding through our organization, but we realized the time will come when we have to deal with recovery. And so this business walk gave us a lot of planning that we look forward to doing. So some of the common themes that we came through is, uh, first of all, it's a need for shop local initiative. This involves not only the creation and awareness for local consumers to, uh, shop at retail stores for their everyday needs, but also to look at how businesses can support other businesses and for corporations and projects to support local procurement. Second common theme was around advertising and marketing. Um, we tied this in a little bit to the shop local campaign as we were surprised really on how some businesses were really easily adaptable to social media and things like curbside pickup and takeout. Other businesses just didn't know where to start. They didn't know, some people didn't know how to use their telephones to take pictures of products, how to do product placement successfully, uh, what e-commerce was all about, and then, uh, having to very quickly, uh, transition into a world where now we're living virtually. Uh, it has been very difficult for a lot of businesses, and we realized that marketing and advertising support is really needed. The current third common theme, of course, is financial assistance, something we've heard about continually in this pandemic with our businesses. And that include financial programs for self-employed, uh, for wage and rent subsidies and just for, um, relief. In no, in terms of municipal supports, we did hear a lot of support for things like lower taxes, standardized healthcare guidelines and bylaws, mass bylaws, issues surrounding parking, and in Jasper especially, the, um, sidewalk open seating was noted for the summer. So what this means for us moving forward is we're in the process of applying for a grant that we're calling our two West Yellowhead Grant. Um, we're going to do a marketing and branding campaign. Hopefully we'll get funded and that we'll be able to talk about how, not only to shop local, but also to create a culture where people think about local first, whether it is that they're eating local, uh, recreating local, uh, spending their time locally, visiting local businesses, but also for local businesses to support each other. And for us also to look at opportunities for procurement, um, in development with municipalities and with larger corporations. So that's about the business walk. There was a couple of other things I did want to touch on to update you tonight on what's been happening since, uh, the pandemic. As you know, we've had, we hired Heather Kochs through a partnership position, um, with, uh, Community Futures and the Town of Edson, and Heather was a great choice. It's been wildly successful. And I'm really happy to say that with, uh, a little bit of extra operate, operating funds that we've received through our triple RF programming with Western Economic Diversification, we're able to extend Heather's position until December. So we're really excited about that. And, uh, we really see a big difference of what it means to have a business coach located right in the community. And, uh, it's really been a valuable asset to our team. Also, of course, we've been marketing the Edson loan that we've jointly partnered on. Um, right now, we've had, uh, one successful loan, uh, given to a business. Uh, we're really excited about that. And I don't want you to think that just one loan is not a big deal because you have to understand that, um, this is a three-year programming, three-year program, and the amount of relief funding that is available to businesses right now is a priority for them. And we need to look at this as a long-term, in the long haul over the next three years as a recovery program that we're, we know that people are going to access when the relief funding is no longer available. Some of the things that we've been noticing in the second lockdown is we're noticing a tremendous impact upon our other services industries. And by that, we mean the hair salons, massage therapists, spa technicians, estheticians, and people in that industry that are were shut down in early December and were only able to open last week. That was a very long period over the Christmas, um, time that, uh, got really hit hard on that industry. Uh, we've been talking a lot to our restaurants and our food sector who, as you know, can only do, uh, takeout and have people in their business for, um, pickup and, uh, curbside pickup and are also be able to do delivery. A lot of them are very frustrated. They're scared. They're, they don't know what's happening and there's a lack of clarity there. And we're really starting to see uh, in general with our businesses, um, mental health concerns with a lot of our business owners because of the uncertainty that's happening. January tends to be a very hard month in the business world anyway, because we come off the high of Christmas where people have been spending their money retail-wise. In January, we all tend to hunker down and pick New Year's resolutions that we never follow and tend to stay home in general anyway. But now we're also in a lockdown, uh, where we're more, we're encouraged to stay home and we're not encouraged to visit our businesses. So there is a tremendous amount of stress and we're really starting to see um, that our team has a lot of mental health concerns about what's happening, uh, in our business community. Um, that's pretty much all I have to update you on. I'd love to answer some questions if you have some or any, uh, concerns that you've been hearing. Of course, we try in every way that we can to help out our Edson businesses. So uh, I would like to do a shout out for our coaching services. If anyone would like to reach out to us, Heather is available uh, for coaching directly in Edson. She can meet, we were meeting virtually and by phone right now. But you can also book an appointment, um, on our website with Heather, or you can call her and check out our numbers uh, on our website. And also too, we have a Facebook page. So just follow us. We post stuff every day on, on coping in a global pandemic and and that's about it. Thanks for having me tonight.
Thank you, Nancy. Um, I'll open it up to counsel. Um, Nancy, I did just share the business coaching, uh, with counsel. I had forwarded that email on, so you guys should have that, um, to share with businesses. Um, and just a side note, uh, please do your part in liking and sharing the Community Future West Yellowhead's information. Uh, when Jax did her data on it, it was shown that when counselors were the ones, uh, and mayors, of course, um, sharing it, that there was more views and such. So please do your part in liking and sharing their posts. Counselor Bevan, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Through the chair to Nancy. I've heard nothing but positive comments about your business walk and that. I've also heard from other places where you didn't get to, or if they weren't willing to talk to you, after they talked to the other business people of what went on when you guys went and visited them and explained why you were there. They're more receptive now. They'd like to hear from you again when you do another business walk. They were just unsure what it was about. They didn't want to say something or do something that was, you know, going to influence their business or whatever and that. But they definitely interested when you guys come back again. Um, there'll probably be more of them that'll say, yeah, stop in to see me. I have something to say about it. So kudos to Community Futures and Town of Edson.
Thank you, Counselor Bevan. And we were fortunate in September and October, we had a little window of time when we were able to do it. And so as restrictions start to change throughout the, the spring and the winter, we're hoping to get another little window of time where we're able to get out again. So we're just watching for it. So we will thank, thank you for that.
Uh, Counselor Sharnard, I think you had your hand up.
Actually, Counselor Bevan's jumped part of the question on me. He already answered, but if the restrictions continue, are you planning some kind of a phone campaign? Because I would agree with the comments. Like you said, you know, out of the ninety-nine fifty-eight businesses, and I too heard from a lot that were a little hesitant to answer questions. They didn't know what you had wanted, but now, um, you know, I guess a more interest in the businesses that are, that are struggling, like your hair shops, your, you know, all business are, um, essential, but for all of our restaurants and stuff that can't do this, I'd be like to hear, you know, how are they, they doing? The mental health, the, the stress, because my fear is a lot of them may not have a choice. They'll be closing whether they want to or not. So if we could hear from some of them people.
I am open to suggestions, like to use the, uh, phrase that has become big in, uh, the global pandemic. We're pivoting every day and, uh, if you can think of a way that we can engage businesses, I'm open and, and willing to try it. So.
Counselor Byer? And then Marissa Harrafter?
Well, thanks. Through the chair to Ms. Robbins. Uh, the business, uh, I think we may have touched on it a little bit at a council meeting, the business, um, uh, support, uh, group that was wanting to start back up again. Um, is there any way to, you know, while the restaurants are maybe not at their regular capacity, I mean, maybe some are doing takeout, but some aren't, um, or takeout isn't sustainable for their business model. Uh, is there a way to kind of have a Zoom meeting with them and say, hey, you know, you guys are all suffering, like, you know, how, how can we, how can we get out of this? You know, what does our recovery look like? What are, what are we going to do differently? Um, or maybe they just don't realize, you know, if, if their mental health is struggling, maybe they just don't realize what, um, access to funding that they may or may not have available to them depending on their, their business size and, and all the, the rules that follow some of those programs. Um, is there a way to reach out to some of them that, um, uh, you know, aren't, aren't at their full capacity, even if they are open for, for takeout?
I'm writing it all down. Uh, yes, I like that idea. So I'm just writing it down. Yep. I do believe that Heather is currently working on a second, um, Edson BSN meeting in February. Um, I'm not quite sure what the, if the details are finalized yet, but I do know that, uh, we plan to focus on a little bit on discussing what is available for businesses in, under relief and recovery funding in various forms. So.
Perfect, thank you. Marissa Harra.
Uh, thank you, Derek P. Mary Curry, and thank you, Nancy, for your presentation. And I just want to say thank you to West Yoda Community Futures for partnering with the Town of Edson on various initiatives. I think we've, um, really did something unique and, uh, I really hope that local businesses do utilize the services that are available. I know trying to get the word out has been somewhat difficult, but, uh, uh, we are doing, I think, some, some great things and that resource is available there. Um, and, uh, I will be joining, uh, the BSN meeting on, in February to present on our non-residential uh, incentive bylaw as well as a loan program. Um, and Ms. Bittner will be joining me as well to, uh, delve into some of those details. Uh, unfortunately, uh, there was a low turnout to the first meeting. Hopefully we'll get a bigger, bigger uptake, uh, for the second meeting. Um, and it sounds like I just got off a uh, conference call with a premier that, uh, there may be an announcement on restrictions here Thursday or Friday. I don't want to get people's hopes up, uh, because there is still a lot of concern about this new variant, but uh, hopefully we'll get some sort of idea of what's going to be happening here later this week.
That's great news. And I didn't know about that. I didn't want to, um, announce it until you were sure that you were going to do it. I'm really excited about that. I think the more that we can, information we can offer our businesses and support in different ways is, it's great. We just need to find creative ways to get out there and get the information to them.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh, go ahead, Cap, Marissa Harra.
Sorry, I forgot to ask my question. Uh, do we have a timeline on when the grant application? Uh, when you're going to hear back on that grant application, or we sent a letter of support for it?
I'm hoping actually we're going to finalize, we're waiting to hear about, uh, um, two more municipalities for a letter of support. We already have the Town of Edson. And, uh, we're hoping to hit the submit button by the end of the week. Um, and you know me, I'm very action oriented. Even if we don't get the grant, we're going to figure it out some way. But here's hope when we get the money. It makes it a lot easier.
Perfect. Anyone else? All right. Well, Nancy, I'll just say thank you very much on behalf of counsel for coming tonight. Um, we are so fortunate to have you in our region and your staff and all the work that you guys are doing. Um,
I am so fortunate to have a great counsel to work with.
We, we knew we needed you before pandemic, but a pandemic really highlighted it. So, thank you very much.
Okay, stay well, everybody. Thank you.
Make sure you let your staff know our appreciation.
Oh, I definitely will every day. Thank you, Counselor Curry.
Thank you. All right. And moving on to, uh, reports from staff. Going to infrastructure and planning, Edson Weston, uh, West Area Structure Plan Amendment Review. Do I have Mr. Hamm? Are you taking this on?
I think we'll hand it over to, to Mandy. She has a presentation, uh, for the committee on the ASP.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead, Mandy.
I'm mute myself. Can, good evening, counsel. Can everyone see the presentation? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, let me just adjust this a little bit. Awesome. So, good evening, counsel. Um, as per counsel's request, I have prepared a brief presentation on reviewing the Edson West Area Structure Plan Amendment. Okay, for tonight's presentation, I will start off by an introduction and then kind of provide some background informations on the content. Then I will do a quick review, kind of an overview on the planning framework, or you can also call it the, um, planning hierarchy that we have actually touched on in the previous committee meeting. So it's kind of just like a refresher for everyone. And then after that, I will introduce the Edson West Area Structure Plan, followed by speaking on the inconsistency that were found through reviewing the town statutory plans and some of the proposed changes that, uh, administration have incorporated in this amendment. And then at the very end of the presentation, we'll be o- open up for any question that, um, counsel may have through the presentation. So during the last committee meeting, I introduced the planning framework, or you can also call it the planning hierarchy, which is shown on the slide here. As you can see, there are many levels within the planning framework. And then so the higher up you are in the, in the framework, the broader the information it is. And then as you actually move down in the framework, the information actually become more focused and the amount of details actually increases. Counsel probably remember these little ribbons on the side here on the right. Yes, they are ribbons that indicate that they are actually statutory plans, which are, um, the plans that administration had reviewed and identified the inconsistency on, in drafting this amendment. For the purpose of this presentation, we will focus on the documents that has the li- little ribbons beside it, which is also highlighted in the red dotted box here. So as a quick overview of the plans, an inter-ministerial development plans, the IDP, is a high-level statutory plan jointly developed by two or more neighboring municipalities. So for our, oh, um, local context for our town, it is a joint document between the Yellowhead County and also the Town of Edson. The IDP ensures that the land use decisions within the IDP area are consistent, uh, are actually considered through a cooperative, like, planning approach to support the long-term interests for both the county and the town. The municipal development plan, you can also call the MDP, is the town's plan for the future. It provides a comprehensive, long-term land use policy framework within the, um, which talks about the present and kind of also talk about the projected growth in the developments that may take place for the town. An area structural plan ASP or area redevelopment plan ARP. Um, these are plans underneath the MDP itself. And then at this moment, the town do not have any area redevelopment plan, um, in effect, but we do have seven area structure plan in effect. So these plans are actually documents that provides by, um, approved by towns council as bylaws. And then these documents is kind of like a framework that describes the proposed land uses, the density of the population sequence of development, the general location of major railways, public utilities in the areas, and any additional requirement that council may require. So the IDP are actually at the top of the hierarchy where all other statutory plans related to the area that an IDP cover must be consistent with the IDP. And then if there are any conflicts or there any inconsistency with the other and other statutory plans, the IDP actually prevails to the extent on the conflicts or the inconsistency itself. So as a quick recap, the Municipal Government Act, MGA, identifies inter-ministerial development plan, IDP, municipal development plan, MDP, area structure plan ASP, and also area redevelopment plan ARP as statutory plans. So statutory plans adopted by municipality must be consistent with one another according to the MGA. So as the hierarchy and the relationships, um, of the statutory plans that ha- I have actually presented in the previous slides, remember the upside down triangles? Um, so each plan must be consistent with the plan above it. So if there are, uh, um, any inconsistency, the higher level of the statutory plans will prevail to the extent of the conflict and inconsistency. Okay, now we're moving on to our area structure plans. The Edson West Area Structure Plan was adopted by council through bylaw number two one one eight on October twenty thirteen. So this area structure plans provides a framework for future rezoning, subdivision, and development of land located along Highway sixteen in Yellowhead County and in the west portion of the Town of Edson. So therefore, it is a regional plan with the Yellowhead County. And it was actually prepared originally in response to the two thousand seven Edson Urban Fringe Inter-Municipal Development Plan. So in reviewing the Edsons, um, town, um, the town statutory plans, inconsistency were found in the Edson West Area Structure Plan adopted in two thousand thirteen, a point to the Edson Inter-Municipal Development Plan adopted in two thousand seventeen, and also the Municipal Development Plan adopted in two thousand fifteen. So some of the inconsistency that we have found, um, for the presentation, we kind of just point out some of the major things that, um, we kind of found from the review. So the first one is the residential land uses towards the north and half of the town's plan area. That's the first one. And then the other one is the arterial road location and misalignment. Okay, so the West Edson ASP is a regional plan with the Yellowhead County. And it was prepared originally in response to the policy direction of the two thousand seven Edson Urban Fringe IDP. So a plan area with, uh, with a mix of residential, rural industries, and business commercial light industrial uses. So the image on the left here, oh, just to kind of a preview of the image. So anything that you see on the left under, which is actually the original from the ASP, and then anything on the right is the proposed amendment that we're actually creating. So the image on the left here shows, um, the, um, the figures at the time of writing. And then in this bottom figure here, left figure, you can see that the north and half of the, um, plan area within the town's boundary were proposed to be residential use, which is, you can see actually here in kind of like in yellow-ish color here, which is actually representing it was residential use. However, with the policy direction changes, um, in two thousand seventeen Inter-Municipal Development Plan, business, commercial, and light industrial were the proposed uses instead. So therefore, to align with the two thousand seventeen Inter-Municipal Development Plan, the statutory, um, at the top of the planning hierarchy in our local context, an amendment is required to re-district the residential district to business, commercial, light, industrial district, which is actually, you can see it here, which is actually in purple. Purple is meaning that it is business, commercial, light, industrial. Here, uh, so this he- here image is just kind of a zoom in image just to see the changes are ma- being made, which is kind of easier to read. So the general purpose of this, um, of this, this district is to provide a mix of highway-oriented, um, business, commercial, and light industrial uses located within the Edson boundary. So in addition, you'll probably notice that, um, the Collector Road, which was originally here, um, which is bisecting to the east-west, um, north of the arterial road. Um, it's actually, it's actually amended because we found that the Collector Road, uh, was not found within the two thousand eighteen Municipal Servicing Plan Update. So therefore, the road is revised in this, in this amendment as well. Okay. In twenty twelve, um, Yellowhead County adopted the Edson West Road Alignment. So with the changes noted on the alignment plans, um, the Edson West Area Structure Plan Land Use Concept Figure, which is shown here on the slide, will needs to be revised to align to, um, with the adopted documents. So please note that, um, the town did not adopt the Edson West Road Alignment Plan. So therefore, you can see there are actually changes on the county side here, but there is actually, um, no changes on the road network on our side. For that. Okay. In additions to the misalignment listed in previous slides, um, the proposed amendments will also update and also incorporate any changes that may occur over time. And then we want to enhance the clarities to make sure that it is easy to read and it is accessible. And also apply planning best practices and principles where applicable. So some of the things that we want to, um, we want to make sure that it's clear is to incorporate a clean directions for future environmental study for the preservations of natural areas. So currently, the preservation of natural areas and study have not been completed for the area structure plan. So administration would like to incorporate kind of like the text reference to adjust, um, address the requirement for future environmental study. So, um, this will kind of ensure that's the appropriate, um, preservations of the natural area within the area structure plan. So some of the example reports are kind of, um, that, that may be included are kind of like the phase one, um, ESA, which is the, um, the environmental site assessments, um, historical resources, geotechnical or, um, habitat or endangered species reports. Another thing that we want, administration would like to, um, kind of clear up is to really, um, to talk about the stormwater um, management facility concepts by reinforcing that, um, future study may be required at the time of the, um, at the time of development or subdivision. So therefore, um, the concept actually, that's actually in the, um, area structure plan right now, may be revised when more detailed study or plans are actually undertaking. So the proposed, uh, amendments, um, that we have here are not only focusing on statutory, uh, documents alignments as per the Municipal Government Acts. They are actually also provide an opportunity for the town to incorporate best planning practices to ensure, um, development happens and within the plant area while we are also considering, um, preserving the natural areas. Thank you for your attention, and we are Thank you for your attention, and we are open up for any questions that council may have for us.
Thank you, Mandy. All right, I will open it up to council for questions. Counselor Shannard.
Hi, Mandy. Thank you for your presentation. The one question, now that I understand what it is, the IDP, I believe last time you brought our presentation, was very important to get passed. And going by history, I believe why errors were made in 13 and 17 is all of council didn't get to talk to the landowners. So I believe it was IDP was the one you wanted to pass, was very important because of timing. How can we involve the landowners? Because I believe they have lots to say to all of council.
I'm gonna jump into this one, Mandy. You're referencing the NCP, the Neighborhood Concept Plan, Counselor Shannard.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, I, this is, what we're discussing right now is the statutory document of the area structure plan, and the Neighborhood Concept Plan is to follow in after the public hearing of the ASP.
Right, if I can respond, my concern is because the landowners were upset 2013-17. So I know there's a timeframe, but I would like, if at all possible, the landowners be able to at least have an opportunity before we pass this, because we're at committee time to discuss it. So all council members can hear the concerns of the landowners, because they were very clear, if you pass this and it's not to our advantage, we will not cooperate, because it needs to be their advantage, because we're doing it for them. So I'm just wondering if we can delay a talk to the landowners.
Counselor Shannard, I think what Mr. Hamm was saying there is that's not the document we're talking about tonight. There are two separate documents.
Okay.
So the document they talked about.
If I can respond to it though, is that's where my question was. If we pass the first one, how does that affect on everything underneath?
Thank you, Counselor Shannard. The guiding principles of the area structure plan are set out in the document here, and those will guide some of our practices that we will use. But ultimately, the concerns of the landowners can be addressed about the area structure plan at the public hearing process.
Thank you. Mayor Sahara and Councilor Byer.
Yeah, through the chair, just to Counselor Shannard's point. The IDP is statutory documents, so there is a public hearing process in which people with concerns with the IDP can present their concerns at that time, and then council can take that into consideration. Furthermore, the changes in the Inter-Municipal Development Plan are more of a housekeeping matter, per se. I think the main concern that you brought forward at the last meeting was in concern with the Neighborhood Concept Plan, which is a completely other ball of wax. And that can be talked about when we discuss that at that time. And that's the one that is under a little bit of a time constraint because of the granting opportunity that paid for that concept line.
Counselor Byer.
Thanks. Through the chair to administration. So my question was, when I was reading through all the many, many changes, many of them just typos or something, I noticed a lot of stormwater management, I believe. I did have a question regarding stormwater. Is that something that the municipality has autonomy over? Or is that something that is required within the Municipal Government Act? Does every county in town have to do something regarding their stormwater management on undeveloped land?
Through the chair, thank you, Counselor Byer. So there are several documents that we have to, that we use as guidelines or statutory documents that we use for stormwater management. It kind of starts from the MGA and works its way down through the Municipal Servicing Plan, Inter-Municipal Development Plan, Municipal Development Plan, down to an area structure plan. And these all give us guiding principles based off of Alberta Environment and Environment Canada in terms of guidelines. Some of those guidelines are addressed in this document, and one of them is the three liters per second per hectare as a runoff kind of rate expected. And that, when applying that to development, what that means is with, what they take is the natural occurring environmental conditions and then adding an impervious nature to that factor. So all we're really doing with the area structure plan and several of these other plans is just really applying the principles that are set out to us by our own statutory documents and by government oversight.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Through the chair, first off, both of you, I'd like to thank you very much for all the work you've done on this. I really appreciate it. I did read through it. What a mess. Lots of changes, and I do understand the hierarchy. But just under stormwater management there, you do have now the second paragraph on mine anyway, that the locations are conceptually illustrated on Figure 7 with the exact location and sizing being determined at the time of development. So that was a little bit different than what the public understood at the open house, I believe. And I know that's our next step down. But when one interacts with the other, I just thought, is this a change that we're saying that this will be a further study done? Are we changing from what was said at the open house? That's all I'm asking.
Through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson, I appreciate you noticing the change in language. We attempted to clear out the language so that it would be much more clear that we are giving guiding principles of the stormwater management expectations and not dictating stormwater management.
All I can say is thank you very much. And thank you also for working with the people that were concerned about this, because at the meeting, Mandy was there and she did see just how concerned they were when it was just in front of one individual's house, the stormwater management system there. So thank you for taking this into account. I really appreciate you listening to the input from the public. Thank you.
Counselor Sorensen.
Thank you. Through the chair to administration. I noticed under Bullet 99, that a part is being removed, the requirement for 10% of gross developable areas as municipal reserve. Is that being removed merely because it only relies to residential land uses? Or is it, I'm just wondering, I was very surprised to see that that was being removed. Thank you.
I may have to defer to Ms. Chan. However, the majority of these bullet points are in attempt to align our previous ASP with our amended Inter-Municipal Development Plan and Municipal Development Plan. It is possible to apply memorandum amendments to a document of this nature, but we felt with the number of adjustments that were made in this document, it was better to amend the entire document and resolve it in that nature. So to answer your question, Mandy's going to jump in.
Yeah, just through the chair to Counselor Sorensen. I believe it was removed because right now there will no, there will not be like a concept on the residential use in the town's land. So that's why that was actually applicable from the previous revision. So that's why that was removed. But we added to make sure that the crime prevention through the environmental designs are is still a consider for that one. So that's why that was actually added on to kind of covering for future other developments that is actually considered for building-wise, for safety.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Ms. Chan and Mr. Hamm, I think that's, oh, no, no, he's coming, he's coming back. I was gonna say, that's a sign of a good job. Counselor Sorensen.
Thank you. Through the chair to administration. I believe it's the page 38 on my package. It's a map of the stormwater management concept. Has any of this changed significantly since the last version?
Through the chair to Counselor Sorensen, I'm going to defer to Mandy on this one because she has electively chosen to use the same diagram, and I'm going to let her explain why.
Through the chair to Counselor Sorensen. So because since in the documents, we kind of want to make sure to speak on the language saying that further study will be required later on stage. So that's why we want to keep this as it is, because that was originally that we have received from the consultant who has completed this document. So they actually have background information on why they selected this. But it feels like that it would be better if we later on in the process, if there is more documentations, then it will be better to understand where are making changes on this document, on this figure 7.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Byer.
Thanks. Through the chair to administration. So I understand the planning hierarchy that Ms. Chan had mentioned and how one has to follow the other, and the other has to follow the other, and then access to follow the other, or at least align properly. If we didn't proceed with the continuing of aligning this properly so the documents make sense, does this mean that development can't occur in those areas until it aligns? Or what would happen if we, I mean, I think that it needs to align, but I'm just asking what would happen if we didn't make this alignment?
Through the chair to Counselor Byer, great question. I think the kind of simplest way to describe it is that we would just be met with bylaw amendments as they come at us, and they would have to be resolved with council on a case-by-case basis. Whereas in this situation, it allows us to amend the document and upgrade it to a point where we don't have to constantly refer back to the previous documentation of the hierarchy.
Mayor Sahara.
I think that speaks to why it's so important to have these all aligned, to reduce that red tape. Otherwise, you're just adding layers upon layers of amendments and confusion in the process. So I think getting the IDP lined up with the other statutory documents and then discussing the NCP and understanding those concerns, I think, is appropriate. So thanks for all the hard work on this.
Counselor Sorensen.
Thank you. Through the chair to administration. Who is responsible for the design and construction of the arterial road? Thank you.
Through the chair to Counselor Sorensen, what a loaded question. Through off-site levies, we would be responsible for the construction of the road.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else from council? Questions? And so I'm guessing, Mandy and Mr. Hamm, that next steps would be this would be coming to council. So just putting that back out to council, next steps will, this will be coming to council for us to vote on. So just if you have any last concerns, questions, this is the time to bring it forward. Mayor Sahara.
And we will be just, just to clarify, through the administration, we'll be doing first reading, and then there will be a public hearing process, correct?
That is correct.
Counselor Shannard.
Okay, with that said, it will be first reading, and you guys did a really great job. So we will notify all the landowners and let them know there's a public hearing. And if any of them are challenged with Zoom or whatever, we're gonna do everything to make sure they have their voices heard. Is that correct?
Through the chair to Counselor Shannard, this is a question we were expecting. We are going to follow the regulations of the province. And if it's a Zoom meeting, we'll make sure that they have the capacity and the technology to engage with council at that point.
Thank you. Mayor Sahara.
Yes, through the chair. I'd also mention that if there are landowners with concerns, also to send us a letter as a part of that process. That's always a good way, just in case something does go sideways. Technologically, a letter certainly will be taken into consideration.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Through the chair, I just again like to say thanks very much for organizing it, that people can join by Zoom, and I hope that we can give them help if they need it. Because this is a different age with technology. I was on mute twice at the last meeting. Okay, thanks.
But that's okay, Counselor Wilkinson. We have to tell Mayor Sahara all the time. Thank you very much, you too. This last meeting and this meeting, you guys did a fantastic job of making it really easy for us to understand, and I really appreciate that. So thank you very much. You guys are good. You have everything you need from us.
Absolutely, and I want to thank everyone also for your engagement in this. And I deserve no credit. It was all Ms. Chan.
Well done, Ms. Chan. Well done. All right, moving on to community and protective services, the draft green light bylaw. And is this Mr. Robinson coming in for us? I wasn't sure, is it Mr. Schramm or Mr. Robinson?
Okay, we'll start with Fire Chief Tyler Robinson to present this one.
Thank you very much, and absolutely appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm just gonna fumble through with Steve's help, trying to figure out how to get this presentation up front and center. So... How are we looking, Steve? I can't.
Let's start your slideshow.
Okay, has everyone seen the slideshow right now?
No, just your switch in your display settings, sir.
Oh, you darn it. Thank you. The swap? That, okay. Very good. So again, thank you very much. We're, I'm here just to talk about a green light initiative for the town of Edson. And how do I, geez, it's going fast. So I'll go through this briefly, and obviously, we'll have some discussion about this. This is a Traffic Safety Act through the province of Alberta. The Edson Fire Department is proposing the passing of a flashing green light bylaw. Right now, several municipalities are doing this and have similar bylaws in place. What the bylaw would do is allow volunteer and paid-on-call firefighters to display a flashing green light in the front of their personal vehicles while they're responding to the fire station. The purpose of the light is to increase the safety of our firefighters and the public by making the responders highly recognizable and visible during their response. As you all know, firefighting is already dangerous enough. We don't want to add danger to the fact that they're using personal vehicles to get to the fire station for someone else's emergency. Drawing attention to the fact that they are responding, the hope is we'll alert the public around them, pedestrians, other motorists, that there is an emergency in progress, and there are firefighters responding to help someone else within our community. A lot of municipalities have been researched on this. Right on the front, there's a list of a few. I'm just gonna jump right to, the city of Brooks has been doing it for just about 23 years already. And the newest one is the town of Swan Hills. So in talking with all of them, their main focus has really been trying to reduce response times. I don't really want to, we have a pretty good response time here. We have an amazing group of volunteer firefighters that drop everything. As a matter of fact, shortly before this meeting, I had to send a crew of five out to a CPR assist on a medical first response call. And I had 10 guys show up and just barely sneaked in to be able to do this presentation. So we have a crazy group of guys that are willing to do almost everything. I don't know if we can reduce response times, but the safety of the firefighters and the public is far more paramount than that right now. Our goal is to increase firefighter safety and public safety by making our sponsors responders highly visible and recognizable while they are responding. The potential to decrease response times, I wouldn't turn it down. But that's not the overall goal. It's pretty tough to beat your firefighters' response times right now. So with doing that already, in, within your council package in the RFR, it outlines the Traffic Safety Act, where a municipality is allowed to pass a bylaw for front-facing green flashing lights for emergency responders. We'd obviously have to do some public awareness and education through here. And the typical ones through social media, traditional media, and maybe even potential signage like the MD of Tabor has done. It goes fast. I was in discussion with the Fire Chief from Swan Hills this week, Monday, just yesterday. And they've only been doing it for a year, and already they've noticed a huge difference in the public and and the recognition of responders coming to the hall for somebody's emergency. So that's really what our goal is, that recognition that there is an emergency and and please have the, there is no legal requirement for anyone to pull over or yield or anything. But just that visual, just like an orange flashing light in a construction zone, that visual cue where there's a guy with a green light coming down. Maybe don't cross the road with your four kids. Maybe don't pull out into that yield sign. Maybe allow the responders to come and do their job in the safest and effective way they possibly can. So the green lights, just some characteristics of a green light. They have to be a certain size. They have to be suctioned to the front of your vehicle. They can't be over 180 millimeters wide, 76 height. And those are stats to make sure that they don't impede the driver vision. There is no rear glare. They're all straight up front facing. Certain provinces right now, right now, Alberta and Ontario are the only ones that allow for a flashing green light. Saskatchewan allows red. Nova Scotia allows red flashing, but only for the chief officers. It's still, although it's within the Traffic Safety Act, the the act says that a municipality can allow for it through a bylaw. So we can't just do it without your approval. These lights would be issued by the fire department. If there's any you know, negative feedback or recourse or anything from the public about guys running around with green lights, that allows us the ability to revoke the privilege because it's not a right. It's a straight up privilege for them. There is, like I say, no legal requirement to pull over. It's honestly just a bring attention to the fact that there's an emergency. As we all know, we've had some pretty heavy emergencies here in the last couple of years, and we certainly don't want to delay response, but more so, we certainly don't want to jeopardize the safety of our firefighters and the public that are involved in that response. This is just a copy of the bylaw. Main highlights of the bylaw, it's only for active firefighters to use. There's no special, firefighters can't speed. They can't go around people in town. They can't run stop signs. They can't run yield signs. It is literally just a visual acknowledgement to the public that there is an emergency, and we have some responders that need to go do do a pretty heavy job. Abuse would not be tolerated. That's why I want to be able to issue the lights. So if there is any misuse or abuse, I want to have that power to revoke that privilege and not allow the green light use. So yeah, essentially, the bylaw would allow for the use of the green lights. And it would be under full authority of the fire department under a council-approved bylaw to either allow people or not allow people to use the green lights. And that was my really quick, dirty presentation. The rest of the information should be in your council package that you received, a draft of the bylaw as well as the RFR. So I'm absolutely open to any questions you might have. And I'm sure Director Schram may also interject at any point in time.
Okay. Mayor Sahar?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Curry, and you have my full support. I think this is a great initiative, and I think it will do a lot to help educate the public in making sure that they are aware of the firefighters in our community responding to emergencies, especially with the EMR program. Seconds count, and even though we do have great response times, those few seconds may make the biggest difference in the world. So glad to see it. And I think you've done your homework, and I'm glad. I don't, I don't expect any abuse of this program. I think those that sign up to do firefighting do so responsibly. So thank you.
I just have to say aloud, I was really hoping you weren't chaired tonight, Mayor Sahar, because I really wanted to say through the chair to the mayor, thank you for your comments. Sounds nice.
It does sound nice. Counselor Schnard?
Thanks, Fire Chief Robinson. I'm the same as the mayor, full support. Let's hurry up and do it. It's a no-brainer. And anything we can do to help these people's safety, because regardless of the time of day or night, it's just a reminder for public that, you know, we'd be courteous, but hurry up and do it. Good job.
Counselor Byer?
Thanks, through the chair to Fire Chief Robinson. You've also got my full support. I'm glad to hear our response times are decent, and I haven't heard anything different. As well as all the distracted driving that happens in our community and every other community as well. I think that, you know, if there's some little glimmer of light that might make people pay a little bit more attention, I think that might be helpful as well. And in one of my previous jobs, something that, you know, that definitely had some risk to it as well. They always told us that driving was the most dangerous part of our day, driving to work and home from work and everything in between. You know, we had safety precautions and hazard assessments for, but but driving was something that always had the most amount of incidents and you know, and also fatalities and all sorts of accidents. So you know, if this can be helpful for our volunteers, then I'm absolutely in full support. Thanks for bringing it up.
Counselor Bevan?
Through the chair, Tyler and Al, thank you for bringing this forward. You do have my support. And I was just wondering with the $800, $1,800 there, is that for everybody to get a flashing green light? Because I know you just said that when you have a call out, you got, so you need five, but 10 show up. So does everybody get one instead of having to swap them out when people are coming on and off shift and they get, you know, broken, misplaced, or whatever? Is that $1,800 cover for everybody?
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Bevan. Thank you very much for the question. So first point of that, the $1,800. After doing a little bit more research yesterday and today, I've grossly overestimated that cost. The cost would actually be down around the $1,260 to $1,300. And that would be to outfit every all 40 of our volunteer firefighters with it. In follow-up, your your number two question, would we transition lights back and forth? With, especially with the times we're facing now, and to reduce that gathering, to me, it makes far more sense to have each person have a $35 piece of equipment on their dash than try to rotate that equipment and potentially increase the the wear and the tear and the in and the out of different vehicles. Have a have one assigned to each member. It's literally signed out. It's tagged. It's numbered. It is returned as property of the town of Edson. So I hope that answers your questions, Counselor Bevan.
Go ahead, Counselor Bevan.
Yes, it does answer my question, and I was going to say I would support everybody to get one. Thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Tyler, I'd just like to say thank you very much for this initiative. I think it's really going to be a safety issue, and that's what we're concerned about. I'd also like to thank you and all the firefighters. I think your job is hard at the best of times. And now with COVID, I'm sure you come into situations you just assume not be in as well. So thank you very much for the effort that you put into your job.
Through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson, thank you. It's our pleasure, and we're whatever comes, we're still going to do it. So rest assured.
Thank you.
Counselor Sorensen?
Through the chair to the chief. Yeah, I'm in full support of the bylaw. Just a kind of minor issue. There's a couple of places in the bylaw where it mentions full-time or volunteer. And I just recommend you every word that there may be a time where you want to hire a part-time position. I know you probably don't have any right now, but it seems silly to exclude part-time staff from the bylaw. And I do have a question on bullet one where it talks about you can use the light going to the fire hall. Is there ever a situation where someone would go directly from their home to an emergency? I know it's probably not recommended, but maybe there is a situation where that might happen.
Thank you. Through the chair to Counselor Sorensen. You're 100% right. It is absolutely not recommended. And if we have people acting, the problem that happens is we're liable for our firefighters, right? They're they're employees of the town. They're covered by our WCB, everything like that. But typically not until they get to the fire station and are assigned a position. We have members going directly to scenes. They're essentially acting as a good Samaritan outside the fire department. Now, if they're flashing those green lights directly to a scene, they are still acting outside the assignment of the fire department as a good Samaritan. However, they're utilizing a piece of fire department-issued equipment to get there. So that would be an instance where we would absolutely deal with it in a disciplinary fashion.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I'm definitely Chief Robinson, definitely in full support. I grew up in Brooks. My family is still in Brooks. So you don't need to educate me. I thought everybody did it. So I have always associated green lights with fire by volunteers and firefighters coming. So I I'm excited to see it. I thought I thought it was more common, just because that's what I know. We also have hospital zones in Brooks, too. So another one that's different. But yeah, so I'm very excited to see it. Excited to see it. And it was quite normal. Quite normal for us growing up, and we knew what it meant, even at
Good.
18, 19 years of age, I knew what it meant. Yeah.
Good. So through through the chair to the rest of council and admin, I believe the next steps will be to assign a bylaw number to to this bylaw. And I'm expecting it to show up at the next bylaw, or not bylaw, Lord jeepers. The next council meeting, which is next Tuesday. So thank you very much for letting me have some time with with you guys tonight.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Have a fantastic night. And moving on, we are moving to questions from the media and public regarding items from this committee of the whole meeting.
There is no media in the queue tonight.
Oh, I was so excited, Steve. Well, we will send her an email afterwards saying we missed her. And Mrs. Parsons, we didn't have anything sent in?
We did not.
Okay. All right, then we will be moving into a closed meeting session. So can I get a can I get somebody? Thank you. Troy, Troy will make that motion to move us into a Counselor Sorensen into a closed session meeting. All those in favor? All right, motion carried, and we will go to the other link. All right, we have everyone back. All right, can I get a motion for adjournment? Counselor Sorens will make that. All in favor?
I think I made it.
Motion carried. Good night, everyone. Have a great night.
Good night.